So we are gonna get started. We are gonna first go with introductions, then we're gonna go on to student climate and culture. What's been happening with our students? We're gonna talk a little bit about what's happening with their student learning. We'll let Mr. Flores highlight that. Then we're gonna talk about safety wise, how great we've been doing here on campus. And then we're gonna end with additional announcements.
Esta es la agenda para hoy. Vamos a comenzar con nuestras introducciones. Y después, para el segundo paso, vamos a hablar del clima y cultura de estudiantil de la escuela. Y el número tres, vamos a hablar del aprendizaje estudiantil. Cuarta parte de la agenda hoy es la actualizaciones de seguridad. Y finalmente, anuncios adicionales que tengamos.
First, we wanted to shout out the individuals who are here right now. We have our executive director and CEO, Fernaz Goshani Fluckner with us.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be with you.
And we have myself, Dr. Matthews, principal. And then we have Javier Flores, who is our assistant principal in residence, as well as Ms. Chanel. Shout out to Ms. Chanel, our parent coordinator, who loves to leave herself off the introduction page.
Hola, para esta llamada, es parte de la introducción, tenemos a la directora ejecutiva, que se llama Fernaz. Y nuestra directora, Dr. Geneva Matthews. Y también tenemos a nuestra coordinadora de los padres, Ms. Chanel Paxton. Y también yo, aquí voy a estar traduciendo hoy para la, para la directora, que soy el subdirector en residencia aquí en Engoway.
And I just also wanted to briefly highlight that this is such a great year that we were able to bring on an additional ten staff members onto our campus to support our students' safety and their learning. So you may hear your students highlight different names that you haven't seen before. And we're hoping in a future parent letter that goes out on Tuesday, we can have more of their names, their titles, as well as photos, so you can get used to the different new folks on site.
Tenemos más educadores aquí en la escuela que no están, que no los miran en esta página, en esta imagen, perdón. Pero para la forma que van a mandar, la letra que van a mandar el martes, ahí van a ver a los diferentes educadores que hemos traído este año a la escuela.
So let's talk a little bit about our student climate and culture.
Vamos a tener la transición a hablar del clima y la cultura estudiantil.
So first, I'm gonna read over the whole slide, Mr. Flores. And then we're gonna go to the next slide, that's a hundred percent in Spanish. So some key highlights that are happening is that we realize that the students' social and emotional needs come first. Therefore, we adjusted our master schedule to increase their advisory. And therefore, there's more time in the classroom to build community. So we're really proud of that. And additional things that we're doing is that we have a weekly student newsletter that goes out about different events that happen on campus, such as we had an amazing spirit week. We had a kindness challenge, that whenever we caught a student being kind, they got a raffle ticket to have a potential free dress day. We had a Halloween spirit week, a door decorating contest, a mass decorating contest, student versus staff basketball and volleyball game. And we also have a school dance coming up next Wednesday for $3. Lastly, we also have an amazing community event coming up, which is our annual harvest festival, which is this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. And we have some amazing activity, as well as community partners coming out to be able to hand out some amazing free things. So you can just come on in. You will start by doing a screening at the front for safety. And then you can enjoy the different activities we have on site during our harvest festival this Saturday. And this is also a couple pictures. We have our Day of the Dead altar here. And we also have a student and a teacher who did Twin Day for Halloween Spirit Week, as well as some of our staff and students playing basketball a couple weeks ago.
Hola, así como les dije, vamos a hablar de la clima y la cultura estudiantil. Nuestros primeros, como hay que decir, puntos claves que vamos a hablar es el ajusto del horario para aumentar la creación de asesoramiento y comunidad en nuestras clases. Segundo es el boletín semanal que mandamos de la escuela para los estudiantes. Terceramente, tenemos las actividades divertidas para los estudiantes. Y unos, un ejemplo de estas actividades es que tenemos la semana de espíritu. Desafío de bondad. Tenemos también una semana de espíritu de Halloween. Tenemos el concurso de decoración de las puertas. Y el tema de esta, de esta decoración es el Halloween. También el concurso de decoración de nuestras máscaras, que es el boca. Juegos de personas, de los, de los maestros aquí contra los estudiantes. Esta es la imagen que miran ahí abajo. Y también el baile que vamos a tener este noviembre 10 aquí en la escuela, que es el baile de otoño. Y tenemos los eventos que tenemos de la, de la comunidad, que es la, el festival anual de la cosecha. Y esto va a ser el 6 de noviembre, de las 9 a las 1. Y antes que vengan este, antes que entren a la, a esa cosecha, nomás vamos a mirar que no tienen síntomas de COVID y que le llamamos el screening antes que entren a la, a la cosecha.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. So next, we also wanna talk about how students are feeling. So as you know, as a school, we love surveys. You get surveys from us all the time, so do our students. And we wanted to ask them, how are they feeling? And not only in their advisory classes, but being here on campus. And so here are some of the responses. The students feel like the staff is respectful. They feel like they appreciate their teachers and staff for helping them. That we celebrate their cultures. They like how everyone works together. And that they feel this year was the very first time that the Latino Hispanic culture was celebrated, especially for the month of September. And so you can also look at the chart where it says that, "Do you feel connected to people at school?" And a very large percentage said strongly agree, "agree." "Are you happy to be at this school?" Very large percentage says strongly agree or agree. "I feel like I'm a part of this school." And we have less that strongly agree, but still a very high percentage said agree. And "do you feel safe at school?" And a very large percentage said agree or strongly agree. And so we're gonna continue to give this survey throughout the school year. There's a lot more questions on there. So we can understand what the progress we're making throughout the year to making our students feel safe. Additionally, students' behavior... Sorry, Mr. Flores, actually, can you translate that part first?
Thank you. Vamos a seguir con el clima y la cultura estudiantil. Y como les, como les mencioné, que usamos el tiempo de la asesoría para tener esta comunidad con nuestros estudiantes. Y aquí tenemos este, unos datos de una encuesta que les, que los estudiantes llenaron. Y miran las respuestas. So muchos de los estudiantes se sienten que los trabajadores aquí de la escuela, este, tienen un respeto con los estudiantes. Aprecian el, la ayuda que los maestros y los que trabajan aquí les dan a los estudiantes. La escuela celebra la cultura de nuestros estudiantes. Y los estudiantes se sienten que trabajan juntos. Los, los trabajadores trabajan juntos y ayudan cuando necesitan. Y apoyan, tenemos sistemas que apoyan a nuestros estudiantes. Y finalmente, que el mes de septiembre, que tenemos el que le llaman Hispanic or Latino Heritage Month, que a los estudiantes les gustó que pudimos celebrar esa, esa, ese tiempo para la cultura latinoamericana. Y arriba tenemos este, nuestros datos también en rojo, en el primero. Los estudiantes se sienten que están conectados a alguien en la escuela. A los estudiantes también se sienten felices de estar en la escuela. Que se mira que además, un poquito más azul que rojo, que decir ahí. Los estudiantes se sienten que son parte de la escuela. Y finalmente, que se sienten que están, este, se sienten bien en la escuela también.
So another thing that I would like to bring up is student behavior and social and emotional support. Even though we feel like our school has been very safe, and we're gonna talk about that a little later, we have still seen an increase in negative student behavior, which we know is very normal after coming back from being at home for almost two years. So we're seeing a lot of students having difficulties with confronting one another and being in the same space, as well as we're seeing an increase of students bringing e-cigarettes and vape on campus. And so we wanted to bring this to your attention because we feel like it's really important for parents to talk to their students about peer pressures and reinforcing healthy activities. Also to discuss uncomfortable emotions your child may experiencing for coming back to school. And sorry, I see that it's cut off. Let me make sure that this can all, and I wanna read it all. As well as being aware of the content that your student is looking at on their phone. So we are asking for parents to please look at your student's phone and be aware of the friends that they have on your, on their phone, as well as the different people they're talking to on their phone. So we just wanna bring this to the parents' attention because even if you have e-cigarettes at home, because you may be an adult, it's really important to not have this accessible to your children.
Okay, so vamos a hablar del comportamiento de los, de los estudiantes y el apoyo socioemocional. Y supimos que, comenzando al año, que íbamos a tener estos diferentes tipos de cambios que en la manera que los estudiantes se comportan y el, y el, y el apoyo que ellos necesitan del socioemocional. Pero también hemos tenido aumento del comportamiento negativo de los estudiantes. Y también los estudiantes han traído cigarillos electrónicos y vaporizadores a la escuela. Son esas cosas que necesitamos el apoyo de ustedes. Porque son cosas que, que sí, si un adulto lo usa en la casa, ¿verdad? No lo quisiéramos que los estudiantes traigan estos cigarros electrónicos a la, a la, a la, a la escuela. Y aquí estamos, aquí vamos a hablar de cómo pueden apoyarlos nosotros, porque somos una comunidad, ¿verdad? Una manera es que puedan hablar con sus hijos sobre la presión de los compañeros y reenfuerzan las actividades saludables, ¿verdad? El que es, cualquier tipo de cigarro es malo para la salud, nomás enfocándolos en eso, ¿verdad? Y también, este, hable sobre la emoción, emociones incómodas que su hijo o hija pueda estar experimentando, como ansiedad o también frustración. Remise la mochila cuando pueda, eso sí. Y teléfono de su hija o hija también. Muchos de los problemas que tenemos son sobre los teléfonos. Y así es, normalmente como los estudiantes se pueden comunicar lo más rápido posible. O se pueden revisar o a veces hasta quitar los teléfonos así para que los apoyen a nosotros. Y finalmente, sean este consistente con sus, consistente del contenido que ve su hijo o hija en las redes sociales y con quién ellos se comunica, se comunican.
Thank you. So we do wanna offer opportunities. We're not gonna be able to answer all the questions, but if there is one or two questions that anyone would like to say out louder in the chat regarding student climate and safety, we can offer it at this time before we go into the next topic.
Esa información aquí fue poco pesada, ¿verdad? Tenemos cosas que los estudiantes se sienten cómodos en la escuela, pero también tenemos este, problemas con el comportamiento y también este socioemocional. Vamos a usar ese tiempo para ver si tienen preguntas antes que vamos a la, a la, a la segunda página. O si tienen preguntas, los pueden poner en el chat o se pueden, este, quitar del mío y los pueden decir.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question. Sorry, it was a direct message.
Yes.
It says, "Thank you for making parents aware of this situation. Did the student in question get disciplined? And/or was the parent made aware of this?"
So great question. Yes, so whenever a student is bringing anything on campus that is... So yes, we've, we handled it because it impacts the safety of that student. And we definitely inform their parent right away. All parents will be actively involved if any of those situations happen because we wanna work jointly with the parent. And yes, there are disciplinary actions that are put into place. But the main focus is not strictly on the consequences, but to ensure that the student, as well as the parents, are aware of the physical effects that such behaviors have on their body and their future. So the goal is to help them not see, not to do that now and beyond. So yes, as a restorative justice school, we have definitely multiple disciplinary actions in place that's to support the student's future growth.
Can I translate that?
Yes. And if possible.
Yeah, so la pregunta que recibió este Chanel, Ms. Chanel Paxton dijo este, de un padre, si los estudiantes que estaban usando, que han usado los cigarros electrónicos fueron disciplinados y también si los padres fueron notificados de lo que ellos hicieron en la escuela. Y la pregunta, si los padres fueron notificados, es sí. Inmediatamente, cuando recibimos noticia de todo y investigamos, los padres fueron inmediatamente notificado y les dimos la historia. Tuvimos meetings con ellos y hay que decir todo, ¿verdad? Que se, que ellos necesitaban para que sepan a la historia completamente. Pero para los estudiantes, los enfocamos en el bienestar de ellos y también el bienestar de la escuela, porque eso es lo que más importante que tenemos, que los que tenemos que enfocar este año. Y de ahí, este, no, no los enfocamos en las consecuencias, ¿verdad?, disciplinarias. Los enfocamos mucho más en lo que podemos reparar como escuela. Enfocarlos en informarlos que, que el malestar que están haciendo en su cuerpo y reparar lo que ellos han hecho en sus clases con los maestros y con sus amigos. So es mucho más reparar lo que han hecho y menos en las consecuencias.
Thank you. So I will go to the next topic. So the next topic, and these are all of our key priorities. One is student social emotional health. Second is student academic learning. And lastly, which is still the number one priority, is safety. So right now, we're gonna talk about student learning.
Hoy estamos a hablar del aprendizaje estudiantil.
So, Ms. Flores, do you wanna take this one off?
Yeah, I'll take it. It's gonna be difficult for me to translate, transition. But hi, everyone. So we're gonna be talking about student learning. So there are a couple of key highlights that we have, which is great, coming out of distance learning, kinda getting back into it. And there's student learning going on in the classrooms. We're seeing students asking amazing questions while they're in there. Means that they're engaged, right? They're making their thinking visual. They're using boards. They're using different types of online platforms. And one of the big, big key takeaways is that students are working together. This is something that we didn't see during distance learning as much. So it's amazing to see now in a classroom. Students are debating. Students are analyzing. And students are creating projects, right? They're getting back into it slowly, but we're getting there, right? So we have, we have these, these, these learning moments. But we also have some key resources that we're using as a school. We have intervention time, intervention time. Every Tuesdays and Thursdays for 30 minutes. We have, for the first 30 minutes of the school day, from 8:00 to 8:30, we have in-class enrichment activities. This is to kind of add additional support to students who might need it or just students who just kinda wanna work on something, right? We also have EOD small group sessions. These are for English language learners or multilingual learners. So pull them out of cloud, pull them out of class, and then we work on an online platform. And lastly, we have Achievement Academy Small Group Support. It's for students who are in need of more support in literacy skills. Lastly, we have after-school math tutoring. This is in-person for students. However, the tutors are working virtually. Mondays for eighth grade. Wednesday, we have seventh grade. And Thursday, we have sixth grade. We also have after-school math tutoring virtually. And this is a tutoring session that led by actual students here on campus. These are peer tutors. And this is open for all students who need support with either homework or classwork. And then we also have some nice images of our teachers and students in the classroom.
Okay, yeah, digo. So hoy este, voy a traducir para el aprendizaje estudiantil. Y unos puntos que tenemos son importantes, que como les dije, es que, que el aprendizaje está pasando a la escuela. Miramos el, cómo afectó este, el, el aprendizaje virtual. Pero miramos que es esa transición, transición. A los estudiantes se están haciendo preguntas en la escuela, en sus clases, haciendo el, su pensamiento este visual cuando escriben cosas. Están trabajando juntos, están en la clase, este, analizando, haciendo proyectos. Y tienen discurso en sus clases. Estamos diciendo que, poquito por poquito, estamos este, transitiendo a unos tiempos normales que queremos para nuestros, para nuestros niños o niñas, ¿verdad? Pero uno de los recursos claves que tenemos aquí en la escuela es que supimos que íbamos a tener este, problemas con la transición del aprendizaje virtual, viniendo en personas. O tenemos este tiempo de intervención, martes y jueves, por 30 minutos en la mañana, de las 8:00 a las 8:30. Y estamos hablando de actividades de enriquecimiento en las clases. Aquí los estudiantes se pueden, este, pueden trabajar en este, en literatura. Cosas que ellos necesitan, cosas de matemáticas. No es mucho más lo que están aprendiendo en clase, pero para que aprendan un poquito más. Sesiones de EOD en grupos pequeño. Ese es el programa que tenemos que los estudiantes que están en el aprendizaje de, de inglés. Así para que los apoyemos a ellos con literatura. Apoyos de grupos pequeños en la academia de logros. Aquí es casi como, un poquito casi como el, el apoyo que tenemos para EOD, pero eso es para los estudiantes que los maestros han identificado que necesitan el apoyo afuera de la clase y en un grupo más pequeño. Tenemos tutoría de matemáticas después de la escuela, para diferentes grados. Y los estudiantes trabajan aquí en persona, con tutores virtualmente. Los lunes tenemos el octavo grado, los miércoles el séptimo grado. Y el jueves, el sexto grado, están en diferentes grados, ¿verdad? Otro sistema que tenemos para apoyar es que tenemos tutoría de, de matemáticas otra vez, pero este 100% virtual. Y eso lo que es bueno, tenemos los mismos estudiantes de la escuela aquí, que apoyen a sus, a sus amigos aquí, por todos los estudiantes que necesitan apoyo con la tarea y también trabajo en la clase.
Thank you. So we'll offer another pause for about one minute to see if anyone has questions about instruction that's happening. We know that we received some additional questions about the previous slide. And we'll definitely answer that at the end of the presentation. But if you have any questions specifically about instruction in the last two slides that Mr. Flores went over, now is the time. And feel free to unmute yourself. We would love to hear your voice.
Vamos a tomar un minuto, una, una pausa para preguntas de esta, de este slide aquí, de instrucción. Y ya sé que tenían unas preguntas de la, de la, de la última página. Sí, lo podemos regresar al final de la, de la presentación. Pero si tenemos preguntas de esta página, se pueden poner en el chat o se pueden, pueden quitar el mute.
Ms. Chanel, did you receive any questions about instruction? All right. We are gonna move on to our number one goal and our number one priority this year that we're very proud of, which is safety.
Vamos a seguir aquí con las actualizaciones de la seguridad de la escuela.
So we wanna talk about some very key highlights. Is that right now, we are currently testing over 50% of our student population every week. So a very large percentage of our student population is getting tested every week. We are very proud to say that we've had zero transmission on our campus. So we have had some positive cases, but none of them have resulted into having any transmission on campus. We are also having three weeks with no positive cases on campus. So we're very proud of that. Going on week four, as well as, right, knocking on all types of wood, as well as, we're very proud to say, since April, we've only had a total of eight positive cases this year, including staff and students. And right now, 40% of our student population has shown proof of vaccination. So we are doing above and beyond what our local schools are doing. And we're very, very proud of our teachers, students, staff member, and family because this is all a group effort.
Las, el bienestar y la seguridad, ¿verdad? Tenemos los puntos claves, el 50% de la población de la escuela. Perdón, perdón, estudiantil se evalúa semanalmente, que hacemos el examen de como el 50%. Y esto es un gran número aquí, que tenemos el número dos. A cero transmisiones en la escuela, significando que si alguien sale positivo, este, la transmisión no pasa aquí en la escuela. Que es diciendo que los sistemas de seguridad que tenemos aquí en la escuela están trabajando. Tres semanas sin casos positivos. Y en el punto número cuatro dice, ocho casos positivos este año, personal y estudiantes. Ese es desde la semana de abril, hemos tenido ocho, ocho casos. Y el 40% han mostrado prueba de vacunación.
So what do we need from families and parents? We need for you to bring your students vaccine cards, so we can have it on file. We know that quite of our students are, quite a few of our students are vaccinated. So if you can bring it with your students or to the school, we can make a copy of it. And also, we are asking for you to continue safe practices outside of school. The only reason we have had no positive cases is because we're making great choices on campus and outside of campus. And with the holidays coming up, we do not want to stop our safe practices.
Qué necesitamos de la, de nuestra comunidad, los padres? Es que traigan sus tarjetas de vacunas de los estudiantes a la escuela para que podamos tenerlas en el sistema archivadas. Y que continuemos con las prácticas seguras fuera de la escuela. Miramos qué los sistemas que tenemos en la escuela aquí están trabajando. Pues queremos que los estudiantes sigan llegando a la escuela, ¿verdad? So que sigamos esas prácticas afuera de la escuela.
And so just to answer a question that's directly relevant, they said, "Are the kids getting tested every week?" So yes, students are being tested frequently. So if 50% of the student population is being tested weekly, your student is getting tested approximately twice a month, so every other week. And if they're vaccinated, they're actually getting tested less frequently because there's less of a chance for them to receive COVID. Additionally, if you would like your student to get tested more frequently, please let us know, so we can make those accommodations for you.
Dr. Martha, this is Corley Maline's grandmother. Because he told me he don't get tested every week. So I would like for him to get tested every week. So what do I need to do?
Give us a call at the front office.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, then. We'll do. Thank you.
No problem at all. Thank you for your question.
We have a raised hand. Do you want me to translate this one first?
Yes, please.
So I know we have a raised hand. Veronica, I'm just gonna quickly, quickly gonna translate this. So una de las preguntas es si los estudiantes están recibiendo el examen de COVID semanalmente. Y la pregunta es que 50% de los estudiantes están, este, reciben el examen de COVID, significando que su hijo o hija está recibiendo el examen, aunque sea dos veces al mes. Y si su hijo o hija está, tiene la vacuna de COVID, el estudiante no está recibiendo el, el examen frecuentemente. Pero si como usted padre quieren que sus hijos, este, reciban el examen más veces durante la semana, los pueden llamar aquí a la escuela así para que su hijo o hija pueden, este, recibir el examen.
Thank you. Oh, and Veronica, would you like to ask your question out loud?
Yes. My question is, my students have been vaccinated and they have provided proof. But it seemed like that they're getting tested like once every week. One of them was getting tested like every week. And the other one was getting tested like, tested like twice a month. Are they all being tested at the same or no? Because like, the question was like, that it seemed like there was someone saying that they weren't getting tested. So are they all getting tested the same way or not? And since I did provide the card of vaccination, I was wondering why was he getting tested like every week? And since I did provide the card of vaccination, I was wondering why was he getting tested like every week? And it seems like other students aren't getting tested.
So that's a great question. So we use a randomized, like computerized system to help us gain the names of who's going to be tested that day. So we're not going individually and selecting names, it's through a computer system. So if we gotten a student's vaccine card that month, we already have it written out for the month who's going to get tested every day. And so it's going to update it once we know they're vaccinated to the following month to get tested less frequently. We also know with all computer systems that they're not perfect and there's some glitches. And so we are very appreciative when parents give us a call to let us know that a student is getting tested too frequently or not frequently enough, because nothing's better than a human person. And so this is being very helpful. So Ms. Chanel is going to write down your name so we can update the system.
I don't mind for them getting tested, but I was just wondering if everybody's getting tested the same way.
Of course, no problem at all.
So, sorry Veronica, hopefully I get your question right. Pero la pregunta fue mucho más la frecuencia en que los estudiantes están recibiendo el examen de COVID. Pero la respuesta fue que usamos un sistema aleatorio, que el sistema nomás escoge estudiantes, de todos los estudiantes de la escuela. Y a veces el sistema no es perfecto, ¿verdad? Pero también los pueden llamar así a que la escuela para que sepamos que el estudiante sí tiene la tarjeta de COVID. O a veces también tenemos que ponerle la tarjeta en el sistema de nosotros.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fernaz Ghulshani and I'm the CEO at Environmental Charter Schools. I'm honored to be with you tonight. I want to start out with one thing and I'll pause Javier for you to translate. But we recently had a visit from the Department of Public Health at Inglewood. And the person who came to look at the school site and give feedback on the school site said that they were blown away by the systems and structures that we have in place and that we're one of the safest schools that they've ever seen and that we're a model for how other schools should manage this time and manage their testing practices. So I just really wanted to take a moment to recognize and appreciate Dr. Matthews' leadership and what a phenomenal job she's done at this site supporting the students and the staff there.
Hola, aquí vamos a hablar un poquito de la misma, de la seguridad. Y lo que dice la señora Fernaz es que tuvimos una... Un visito, vinieron a visitar el departamento de la salud pública. Y nos dijeron muchas cosas, pero lo que nos dijeron es que la escuela es como un ejemplo aquí es tener sistemas que ayudan el bienestar de nuestros estudiantes y también la seguridad. Solo le damos muchas gracias a nuestra directora, Dr. Matthews, para que ha creado esos sistemas para la escuela, para que podamos tener los estudiantes que estén seguros.
We're extremely lucky to have your leadership, Dr. Matthews. I want to make you all aware, I'm sure you're aware of this. The governor has spoken about it. They've been waiting for the Pfizer vaccination to be approved for younger students. And they're likely to implement a vaccine mandate for all students and all educators and staff on schools in the next few months. So if your child is not vaccinated, the timeline for getting vaccinated to keep them on campus is shortening. And in the next few months, they are going to be requiring it throughout the state of California.
Tenemos las actualizaciones de nuestros directores. Y el punto es las vacunas, ¿verdad? El mandato estatal llegará en los próximos meses. Es probable que la vacuna Pfizer para los niños de cinco a once años se apruebe antes del viernes. Considere inscribir a su familia lo antes posible si aún no lo ha hecho.
I'll just add that, you know, I have a thirteen-year-old who I got vaccinated the first day that I could get her vaccinated at home. And I have an eleven-year-old son who I cannot wait to get vaccinated. Once, and my husband's a doctor and all of my siblings are doctors, we all got vaccinated. I trust in this system. I've seen that it's been really effective and that it's reduced exposure for us, it's reduced stress. And I have a ninety-year-old father at home that we go visit all the time and I really didn't want to expose them to my kids in this way. So if you could please consider getting vaccinated as soon as possible, we will be providing more dates for families to sign up. This is the best way, both to keep our students at school, to reduce risk for our students and to keep their social emotional wellness high is by having them get vaccinated.
Lo que dice también, Miss Fernaz, es que ella tiene hijos también, tiene un hijo de trece años y lo llevó a que se ponga la vacuna lo más pronto posible y tiene... ¿Es it a daughter or a son that's eleven?
A son.
Tiene un hijo de once años que pues no quiere esperar, quiere que le pongan la vacuna lo más pronto posible. Y tiene familiares que son doctores y ella cree en este sistema, en esta ciencia. Y le ha quitado el estrés que muchos hemos tenido y que consideren que lleven a sus hijos que se pongan la vacuna.
We have a couple of questions you may or may not be able to answer. One is like, is there a timeframe of this expectations of the mandated vaccines? And people also feel like this is great, but are nervous about the adverse reactions to the vaccine.
So the first thing I'll add is that the timeframe is not clear yet when the mandate is going to be implemented. Because it needs to, they're waiting for the Pfizer formal approval for five to eleven-year-olds. But we have been told that it's coming down in the next few months and that we should be letting our community know that this is happening soon.
La pregunta fue en el tiempo que los estudiantes tienen que poner la vacuna, ¿verdad? Y no hay un tiempo exactamente cuando vamos a saber que van a dar el mandato, pero pensamos que va a pasar... What was the timeframe like?
In the next few months.
Okay. En estos cuantos meses pensamos que van a poner el mandato para la vacuna.
The second thing is about the adverse reactions that people have to the vaccines. I think there are some people who have health issues that prevent them from being able to get vaccinated and I respect and appreciate that. There is some stuff in the news and the media that isn't accurate. So my sister is actually a physician, is a pediatrician. And she has told, and I've studied this significantly in this role as well. The number of students or the number of children who get myocarditis, which is the inflammation of the heart, from the vaccine is point oh two percent. But the probability of getting myocarditis when a child gets COVID is over three percent. So it's several hundred times higher probability of getting inflammation of the heart when you get COVID than when you get it from the vaccine. In addition, the term, the period that students or the children get myocarditis is extended significantly from the virus. So if a child gets myocarditis from the virus, it generally lasts two weeks. Whereas if they get it from the vaccine, it generally lasts two days and can be treated with Advil or Tylenol. So it's really important to know some of the things in media like, oh, you're going to get heart inflammation and you're going to, the risk of it is significantly, significantly less with the vaccine and the challenges associated with it are significantly less with the vaccine. I'm sorry Javier, that was a long one.
I got this, I need to try this.
Thank you.
Este, so voy a traducir las reacciones adversas, reacciones adversas de la vacuna. Ya sé que muchos tenemos pensamientos de ese tema, ¿verdad?, cómo se va a sentir el cuerpo después de la vacuna. Lo que dice Miss Fernaz es que... Is it your sister who's a pediatrician?
Yeah, she works at the LA Department of Public Health.
Okay, so la hermana de Miss Fernaz es una pediatra, trabaja para el departamento de salud. Y estamos hablando de la inflamación, uno de los abresos, reacciones adversas de la vacuna y también de COVID es la inflamación del corazón. Y con la vacuna hay un punto cero dos por ciento que pueda pasar la inflamación del corazón. Y normalmente esta inflamación puede durar lo más largo, dos días, ¿verdad? Estamos hablando de punto cero dos por ciento que puede pasar este tipo de reacción con la vacuna. Y normalmente les dan un tipo de Advil o Tylenol. So Tylenol or Advil for the inflammation of the heart. Normalmente les dan este Tylenol, pero la inflamación del corazón también puede pasar cuando un estudiante agarre COVID. Y normalmente esto pasa este tres por ciento, esto puede pasar tres por ciento. Estamos hablando de punto cero dos de la vacuna y tres por ciento de este agarra no COVID. Y la inflamación del corazón impacta a los estudiantes a veces hasta dos semanas y con la vacuna es dos días.
Thank you for that additional information. We are going to go on to the next slide that talks about Thanksgiving break and what students can do who are vaccinated and unvaccinated about coming back to school.
So it's really important to recognize that in order to benefit from the benefits of vaccination as it relates to travel, you have to be fully vaccinated, which means both shots and the two-week period after them. So if a student is fully vaccinated, they can travel outside of the state of California and return to campus on Monday, November twenty ninth without any requirement for testing. They can come back to campus. However, if an unvaccinated student travels outside of the state of California, this is not our policy, this is LADPH guidelines and requirements. They not only have to get tested, but they have to quarantine for seven additional days after getting a negative test. And if they don't get tested, they would have to quarantine for a total of ten days. So it's really, really, we want your children to be in school when this holiday is over. We want them to not miss out on one day of school. This is better for them socially emotionally, but it's also incredibly better for them academically. So if you have a child who's not vaccinated, please consider not traveling outside of the state of California if they are not vaccinated, because this will significantly impact them.
There's the next slide, right? Thank you. Mismo tema de actualizaciones de la seguridad de la escuela y esto es información de nuestros directores. Viajes de vacaciones de acción de gracias, ese es el tema. Los estudiantes vacunados pueden viajar fuera de California y regresar a la escuela el lunes veintinueve de noviembre si salen del estado, ¿verdad? Los estudiantes no vacunados que viajan fuera de California deben regresar con una prueba de PCR negativa tomada dentro de tres o cinco días posterior es el viaje siete días de cuarentena. O venga el lunes veintinueve de noviembre para una prueba de PCR y espere de dos o tres días para obtener los resultados más siete días de cuarentena.
So first, we want to make sure that this is clear. We are going to put it in the parent letter, talking points, what to do if you're vaccinated, the student is vaccinated and unvaccinated and they travel during the holidays. We also are having a lot of comments and concerns in the chat that are very, very warranted about definitely we agree and support a thousand percent that you know is best for your child and you want to keep your child safe in what you are comfortable and uncomfortable with. We absolutely do not disagree with you there. At the moment, we aren't mandating it, it will be a state mandate before we have to move anything forward. And even then, we'll let you know what options are available if you choose not to. But as a state-funded school, we do have to comply with state mandates.
I'll try my best. So then I must have still sent the manuals and the chat, ¿verdad?, de las vacunas. Y en este tiempo no tenemos mandatos de la escuela. Pero últimadamente si el mandato, el mandato de las vacunas viene del estado, nosotros tenemos que hacer lo que ellos hacen porque nosotros recibimos nuestro... El, perdón, el funding, hay que decir los recursos a la escuela del estado. So de ahí podemos ver qué podemos hacer como una comunidad para apoyar a todos los estudiantes.
And additionally, we do feel that the vaccines are very helpful in mitigating the risk on campus. However, we do know that amongst the communities of color, that we have been very leery about a lot of this and we want to address that and to acknowledge that and we will have future town halls on that. But we just want to state that we are balancing between what feels comfortable and also what is in the best interest and what is also safe. So we are working with you with this and we are not trying to force this unless, like we said before, the state brings it on down, we will not have a choice.
También sabemos que las vacunas, aunque sean en la escuela, están trabajando para los estudiantes para que sigamos con la seguridad de todos los que están en la escuela. Pero también sabemos que la comunidad de color nosotros ha sido impactado, ¿verdad? Pero vamos a seguir trabajando y a ver qué se puede hacer sobre este tema. Pero si el estado pone el mandato de la vacuna, vamos a tener que hacer lo que dice el estado.
I just want to add that we are so grateful for our community and we love this community and we're so grateful to be able to serve your children. And it is a hundred percent our goal to come out through this pandemic with all of our students at our schools and to not lose one student to these mandates or to these health precautions. We love this community and we're incredibly grateful for you. We're doing the best that we can in this moment to ensure safety and we will do the best that we can to support the needs of our families. But as Dr. Matthews said, there are restrictions to being a district, to functioning within the district system that we will be held accountable to in the same way that other vaccines are required, we will be held accountable to them. So we'll keep you posted, we'll communicate frequently, we'll have vaccine clinics frequently, we'll have opportunities to talk to doctors. We don't want to lose one staff member or one student through this process because we love our community and we know that together we're effective. So I just, you know, I respect everyone's ability to serve the needs of their children. I am happy to talk to anyone about my thought processes I decided for my children. If you're struggling to figure it out, but I, you know, we're going to do our best to keep our community together.
Vamos a hacer lo mejor posible para que podamos tener la comunidad juntos. Y la meta es para que los quedemos con todos los estudiantes de la escuela, ¿verdad? El bienestar y también para que ellos se queden aquí y no se vayan para otra escuela. Pero también sabemos que hay restricciones, que tenemos que... Las restricciones del estado, ¿verdad? Y ahí son las restricciones. Pero también respetamos a los padres como comunidad y lo que ellos piensan que es mejor para sus hijos o hijas también.
Thank you. So we are at the end. We have updated you about our student and climate culture. We have updated you about instruction and we have updated you about safety. So we want to offer about five more minutes for any questions before we conclude our town hall meeting.
Llegamos al final de la presentación aquí para preguntas y un resumen. Hablamos de la clima y la cultura, del aprendizaje y hablamos de la seguridad. Aquí llegamos a los anuncios o preguntas que tengamos.
I know one parent did ask if they can be updated more frequently about different disciplinary incidents that happen on campus, such as students bringing e-cigarettes on campus. And the answer is yes. We will find a more strategic way to keep parents informed of such matters, so we can also support you in having these conversations at home.
Una de las preguntas de los padres es que si ellos pueden recibir información de los, lo que está pasando en la escuela como cosas de la disciplina, ¿verdad?, el comportamiento de los estudiantes. Y la pregunta es si pueden recibir aunque sea este un tipo de resumen de lo que está pasando. Vamos a ver en qué manera podemos hacer eso así para que ustedes pueden, ustedes puedan tener estas conversaciones con sus hijas o sus hijos en la escuela.
Thank you for the lovely comment in the chat. So, as you gather your questions, I will go over the last two announcements again. We have a student fall dance happening next Wednesday from four thirty to six. We are really excited about it. It's three dollars and also it's outside a hundred percent. So, we're feeling like it's a completely safe event. And then lastly, we have our harvest festival this Saturday from nine to one. If you can come, even if you could only stop by for thirty minutes, it will just be great to have your presence.
Antes que, este, lo solgamos de esta llamada, tenemos como les dije el baile del otoño, que es el noviembre diez, de las cuatro y media a las seis. Y ahí están, tenemos el cuánto cuesta el boleto. El último día para comprar el boleto es el nueve de noviembre. Y también el baile va, lo vamos a tener afuera, no va a estar dentro así para que los estudiantes estén bien, en seguridad. Y también tenemos el festival de la cosecha, que es el, este sábado, el seis, la de las nueve a las una. Y como, y como les dijo la directora, si pueden venir unos treinta minutos así para que vengan y miren. Va a ser mi primera vez viniendo a esta cosecha, so, nos quisiera ver a todos.
And I guess for our final, first, our final question and then I want to say thank you to everyone who joined is Ms. Chanel, there's a question for you about enrollment in the chat.
You know I love those questions. Yes, we will be sharing that link very soon. We love to share it with our families first so that you're able to fill out that application and share it with your family and friends. But very soon, probably this week.
And very soon, she's asked, she's answering, "When can we start enrolling, applying for enrollment for sixth grade?" Very soon.
And when are tickets going on sale for the dance? I see.
Today, so you're, so if you can give your student three dollars and especially if you can give them three ones, it's a little easier. Tickets go on sale, it started today, so you can give them money tonight for tomorrow. And we will selling them up until the dance. I know, Mr. Javier, that's a lot. So, students, so sixth grade enrollment will be happening very soon and there will be a link sent out to parents and students can start buying their tickets as soon as tomorrow for three dollars.
The link to parents is for the, it's for the harvest fest?
For enrollment for next year.
Okay.
Sixth grade enrollment for next year.
Okay. What did you mention about a... Okay, no.
So, unas preguntas fue este, para los estudiantes que vienen al, que van a venir al sexto grado y que el enlace va, va mandado este, en uno, en unos tiempos todavía, pero ya lo estamos pensando así para que ustedes sepan. No sabemos el día exactamente, pero sí van a venir el enlace para que puedan este, matricular a sus niños, niñas.
And someone asked if we're going to have volunteers? Oh, sorry, if you had to keep going, so sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so una, otra pregunta fue cuando los estudiantes pueden comprar los boletos para el baile. Y los boletos este comenzaron a vender hoy durante el lonche. So, si les pueden dar unos, unos tres dólares para los boletos fuera de...
And the last question is, can they have, can we have volunteers for the dance? Not this dance. Students have asked us not to because they get too nervous to dance in front of their parents. So, no parent volunteers for this dance. Sorry.
Sí, para este baile no podemos tener este, padres que pueden venir a la escuela o familiares. So, perdón.
Well, thank you, everyone, for just being present. Thank you to our CEO for joining us today and sharing some great updates as well as answering questions. Thank you for Ms. Chanel for always setting this up. And thank you, Mr. Flores, for just your expertise and your amazing translation skills.
Thank you, Dr. Geneva Matthews, for your exceptional leadership. And really, once again, it's awe-inspiring what you've accomplished this year so far. So, thank you.
Thank you. Short of a team. Have a great night, everyone.
Gracias a todos.
Hey, congrats.
Thank you. So, not a large turnout, but it's okay.
That was a hard one, the one about adverse reactions to the vaccine.
Yeah.
Did I go too far with it?
Need to stop recording?
Oh.